Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of -- good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Cumberland School Committee to order at 7:15 PM. Please rise for the Fudge of Legions.
First order of business is approval of the agenda. Mr. Demonic makes a motion to approve the agenda? Second by Mrs. Goggan, all is in favor? That passes six nothing. And just like to note that the Chair, Mr. Salvatore, is out of state tonight and is unable to attend. Next up is the consent agenda. We have a bunch of things here. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting on May 25th, 2017. Approval of minutes from the Executive Session One on May 25th, 2017. And Executive Session Two on May 25th, 2017. The enrollment report from June 1st, 2017. The school police report from May 1st, 2017. And the residency/truancy report from June 1st, 2017. Pleasure with the committee. Motion to approve by Mr. Hess. Second by Mr. Fiorello, all is in favor? That passes six nothing. Next up is report of Executive Session. We did have Executive Session tonight, June 8th, 2017. On the agenda is a student hearing decision. The student hearing was withdrawn, so the committee did not take a vote on that. There were no votes taken, in fact. Sorry, Mr. Fiorello corrected me. The appeal was withdrawn and the hearing was heard. So we did not vote. And we need to seal the Executive Session minutes. Mr. Hess makes a motion to seal? Second by Mrs. Goggan and Mr. Fiorello, all is in favor? That passes six nothing. Next up is Superintendent's Report, recognitions.
Good evening, everyone. The first thing that we would like to do, Mr. Chairman, is recognize some of our retirees who are here this evening, so if you could join me down at the podium, I'd appreciate I know that Diane, Diane, can you please join us at the podium? And I know that Ms. Paquette is here as well. And I know that Robert Bartanian is here as well. Robert, come on up.
It is my pleasure to acknowledge these employees in the district who have committed a tremendous amount of service to the district of Cumberland. And the first person that I'd like to recognize is Diane Devall. Diane is a health and physical education teacher, as I am. And Mr. Demonic is as well. She has been teaching in the district for 38 years, which is remarkable, because she's only in her 40s. She has worked all over the system, but she spent several years at the high school and most recently served the students at North Cumberland Middle School. So please join me in congratulating Diane Devall on her retirement. Pictures at the end. Jane Paquette is a sixth grade teacher at North Cumberland Middle School. Jane has been teaching in the district for 20 years. She started her career in Cumberland as a kindergarten teacher and sixth grade resource teacher. And, as I just mentioned, finished her career as a sixth grade teacher at North Cumberland Middle School. So please join me in congratulating Jane. Next up is Robert Bartanian. And Bob has been a custodian in the Cumberland district for 26 years. Most of those years have been spent both at North Cumberland Middle School and Community Elementary School. Please join me in congratulating Robert on his retirement. We also have these snappy-looking little tote things that say Cumberland School Department, and you can put your swim trunks in there, Bob, and your -- Oh, picture. Where do you want us to go? Just a couple of things. I don't know if anybody knew this, but Diane and Beth Coughlin are sisters. Some people don't know that. And Denise Queenen was supposed to be here this evening, but the reason that she's not here is because she's with her daughter, who is in labor at this moment. So we felt that that was a fairly good excuse for her not to be in attendance. Okay. I don't have my agenda, but I believe next up is Mr. Mike Ferroci. We want to recognize him. Mike, can you come on up, please? So the reason that we invited Mike to come to a school committee meeting is because we wanted to recognize the work that he has done as the leader of the band at the high school. And it's no surprise that, under his leadership, there have been some really impressive and positive changes. And I got this email from a gentleman by the name of Mark Colosi, which I believe does a great job of summarizing the work that Mike has done as the band director. This was actually sent to both Mr. Tenraro and me. "I'm writing to send congratulations for an incredible performance by the Cumberland High School Concert Band, under the direction of Mr. Michael Ferroci, at the 2017 Rhode Island Music Education Association Senior Division Band Festival, held at East Providence High School. As manager of the festival for many years, I and others in the audience were astounded at the amazing growth of this program under Mr. Ferroci's direction. Cumberland's performance was both exciting and well-executed. Our adjudicators also recognized the outstanding musicianship of your students and the expressive and technically demanding repertoire, earning a rating of high, excellent, just shy of superior. As a veteran music educator, it has been exciting to witness such wonderful teaching, learning, and progress with the band program. I thank you for your continued support of music education at Cumberland High School and look forward to the many more great performances by Cumberland High School's music program. Sincerely, Mark Colosi." I think that really summarizes the fine work that's happening in the high school with the music program. So congratulations.
Totally caught off-guard. So we just recently took a trip to Cleveland, Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, so I just wanted to give a brief summary and have a few students that really helped this program out a lot come up and say a few words about their experience as well, as brief as possible. So I've known for some time that this year would be a big year for us, that being the high school band. I started teaching the elementary music in fifth grade band five years ago, and after that first year in Cumberland, I was moved to the high school with a mission, and that was to create a competitive marching band and concert band program. I was told I needed to develop a culture for music education and excellence in music over a five-year period through a five-year plan. 2017 senior class and I began high school together. They were my first high school students. They come in one day as freshmen before the rest of the school, so I got to meet them first. And I laid this enormous task on their shoulders. I set high standards for them. I explained that the upperclassmen may or may not be good role models for them, and that they need to be the best. I told them they need to be the agents of change. Students collectively put in hundreds of hours between repairing broken and rusty music stands and fixing up what was a mountain of papers. That was a music library. These students showed dedication, commitment, and leadership. We were a 35-member group, and over the years, we're now a 65-member group and counting, looking at an even larger band next year. And those freshmen in 2013 are now the seniors, and those fifth graders I started with are now the freshmen. In the fall, we march, and in the spring, the same group, same kids, compete as a concert band. And this year's band raised that standard, stepping up their efforts, their practice, to rise to excellence. And the underclassmen today understand that the 2017 seniors took it seriously, and we like to have fun, but we strive to be as great as we can. This year, our efforts were recognized by improved scores at festival, including an excellent at the Rhode Island Festival and then traveling to Ohio. We listened to those adjudicator comments from our first. We made improvements, you know, fine-tuned it, and we scored Superior, which is that top score for that Ohio festival. A really exciting trip, and I can't wait for you to hear about it a little bit from them, too. We were also featured on the road show. That was for Thanksgiving, so that was super cool. They called us, gave us like two weeks. We set it up and had a 15-minute feature, and just so much more, I could go on and on. But about this trip, from a teacher perspective, on the Cleveland trip, the students were extremely well behaved, not a single problem from any of them, which really shows a lot of respect, I think. And just absolutely a group of kids that we should definitely be proud of as a town. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce up here the CHS Band Assistant Conductor, Mr. Daniel Pierce.
My name is Dan Pierce. I'm the Assistant Conductor here at Cumberland High School. I'm also a graduating senior. When Mr. Ferroci asked me to come up here and talk to you guys a little bit about this past year, I was like, ah, this should be easy. And then I sat down this morning, and I was like, where to start? So the first thing I want to tell you is that we couldn't do anything we did this year without his effort and support, and from support of people like you, parents, anyone who comes out to any of our concerts. But I think the greatest thing for me, going in that first day of my freshman year and then leaving on Monday, is knowing that my freshman year, we came in, we're like, okay, let's see how we do, and then going to Cleveland, Ohio, and scoring a 95.5 out of 100, which is really good for us. We spent the entire day at Cedar Point Park. We went, we performed our festival. We left, we went to the park, we spent the entire day there. We went to the wrong, we went to the wrong ceremony, but that's okay. Said it started at 6:30, ended at 6:30, but that's besides the point. But so when they called us up, some of the students up to talk and like announce our awards, pretty much, I was one of the students who got to go up. And their Cumberland High School band received Superior. We also came in first place in our division, and we also received the overall standards award. So to simplify that really quickly, we came in first, we got a really high score, and we got the highest score out of all the groups that performed. And really, all I have to say is thank you. It's been an awesome pleasure being able to work with you.
Thank you, Dan. Now I'd like to invite up the Class Valedictorian and Saxophone Section Leader, four-year veteran of the Cumberland High School Band. That would be David Kapatingan.
Like Mr. Ferroci said, I'm David Kapatingan, a four-year veteran of the band. And I just want to start off by finishing off what Dan was talking about with the Ohio trip. So the second day of the trip, or the third day, I guess, but the second day of activities, we started off by performing at the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame in Cleveland, which was an amazing experience. People really seemed to enjoy it. We got to perform in pretty much is the big open lobby, so most of the people walking in were able to hear us playing. And it was a great experience. It really felt like the type of thing I do band for, sharing music with other people, having fun, and those kinds of great experiences. And although not all of them can be as cool as performing at the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, it definitely kind of solidified for me what band is about, the types of things I like to do in band, and why I do band. Something else I just wanted to mention or talk about is, as great as this past year has been, kind of the evolution that all of us seniors have seen over the past four years. I think band has been a really integral part of my high school experience, especially when it comes to becoming a leader. As a section leader and as a senior, I really had to, this year, step it up and take some of the stress out of Mr. Ferroci's hands, and organize sectionals and those sorts of things. So it's provided me a lot of great experiences, and I think any of the seniors here, any of the seniors in the band, could say the same thing. We've really come into our own as people through bands, and I couldn't be more grateful for the experience I had as a senior and throughout the years. And I just want to say that all of us seniors, everyone in the band, is so grateful for the parents who've made this possible, for Mr. Ferroci, who's been so important in improving this band so much, to teachers, to parents, I think I already said, everyone who volunteers, the school committee, because I know you guys are always supportive of funding whenever you can. And we're just really thankful for what has been possible for us here at Cumberland High School. Thank you.
And the last student I'd like to invite up to speak is our clarinet section leader, Ms. Emily Burrard, to talk a little bit about her experience through high school bands.
Thank you for allowing me to come out and talk. Like I said, like he said, my name is Emily Burrard. I am a four-year member of the band, and I am the clarinet section leader, which I held that position last year, my junior year, and this year, my senior year. So David and Dan talked about accomplishments we made this year in the band, but I'd like to talk about where we started. So my freshman year, when I came into the band, like Mr. Ferroci said, we had 35 kids. And the culture that was there in band was very negative. Not everyone wanted to really be there. They more so took band as a break in the school day. It wasn't a core class, so they didn't take it seriously. So when I went into band, I didn't really have anyone to look up to, because, like I said, everyone had just this very negative, not very inspiring outlook on band. So I knew from that point, when I was a freshman, I wanted to make an impact on this program, and I wanted to improve the culture and make it more beneficial for students and be someone that everyone can look up to. So my freshman year, I had the opportunity of playing with the Navy Band in Annapolis, Maryland, when we went there on our first festival. Our first festival was in Maryland, it wasn't in Rhode Island. So it was a little scary. But although I was only one clarinet out of 30, out of a band of probably over 100 people, which were all adults, it was an incredible experience, one that I would say is one of the most memorable I've made in high school. So while we can thank Mr. Ferroci for all our accomplishments, we also have some professors and doctors of music to thank. Dr. Cardney and Dr. Neves, who are two very professional, experienced directors of music, have came to our school to help the band improve in us, and have really taught us a lot of the things that we have learned and have helped us along the road to our high scoring of Superior. The final thing I'd like to talk about is what band has taught me over these four years. And the biggest thing I could say is it has taught me how to be patient with people. Starting each year, in the beginning, in the fall, we start from square one. We start, and we look at the freshmen and we say, you guys are coming up from middle school band, where your band was 20 kids, and here you are with 50 kids. And you're with much more experienced musicians, and these freshmen, they need to find a way to fit in and to learn quickly. So usually, we start from square one in the beginning of each year. And from doing that each year, my sophomore, my junior, and my senior year, it's really taught me how to be patient with people, especially when they're learning new things, and how to pass my knowledge on to the younger students, which is also something I've learned from Mr. Ferroci, as he's passed his knowledge on to all of us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily. I placed on the shoulders of these students a monumental task, and that was to change a culture. I knew that this year would be great, and, you know, this is also my senior year at the high school, as I've been working here five years and four at this school. And I also owe the support to the Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, and School Committee, the parents, who are driving those kids back and forth every day. Thank you so much for helping create what was once just a dream into a reality. So thank you so much. And in conclusion, I'd like to have the band bring up the hardware and present to the school committee all of the plaques and trophies that we've earned. Come on up, guys. Give them a round of applause.
that Michelle McManus, another retiree, is sitting in the audience. Michelle, come on up. Is Michelle here? Yeah, I thought so. I apologize for not seeing you the first time. Michelle is also retiring this year. Michelle is also a health, physical education, and adaptive physical education teacher. She has been teaching in the district for 38 years as well. All 38 at McCourt Middle School. Is that correct? And I know the real reason why she came up is because she really, she wanted this bag. This is a full agenda this evening, and we have a few other things under the Superintendent's Report that we need to get to this evening. And the next thing that I'd like to do is, is Jen here, Fisher? Jen, come on up. We would like to introduce the new Director of the Cumberland School Volunteers, Kristin Sukatos. Come on. Come on up, please. What's that?
My name is Kath Steinkie. I'm a Cumberland School Volunteer Board Member, currently serving as their treasurer. With Mary Ann Roll's retirement at month end, the board has chosen a new director, Kristin Sukatos. Kristin has lived in Cumberland for many years. She has twin sons at North Cumberland Middle School. Kristin was a community school PTO Board Member, along with being the cultural enrichment coordinator. Kristin has served as the community representative on the Cumberland School Department Budget Task Force. She is currently a member of the Cumberland Education Foundation. Kristin's enthusiasm, leadership, and strong commitment to our community makes her a great fit for the Director of the Cumberland School Volunteers. Please welcome Kristin.
Hi, I'm Kristin Sukatos. I just wanted to say that I'm honored and privileged to have been selected to be the new Director for Cumberland School Volunteers, although a very petite person, Mary Ann Roll, leaves very large shoes to fill. I recently had an opportunity to attend a RIF event with her at Garvin and saw firsthand the positive impact that the Cumberland School Volunteers has on the kids in the community. It's both a rewarding experience for the students as well as the volunteers. And as you heard from Kath, I have been a volunteer in a number of different ways in the community as a resident of Cumberland, and I've always found that being a volunteer brings people together, it strengthens the community. And I hope to continue that as the Director of Cumberland School Volunteers. Thank you.
So those of us that have had a chance to work with Kristin know that everyone would agree that she does have some very big shoes to fill, but Kristin is an impressive person, and we're lucky and excited to have her take over this position. And last but not least, under Superintendent's Report, there is a trend, I think a real positive trend, happening in schools across the country. And we have two teachers from BF Norton, Brooke Ashley Lionheart and Judith Sanford, who are involved in creating student-led parent-teacher conferences. So, and I know this has happened in some of our other schools, too, but this is really exciting, because students are actively involved in -- exciting because students are actively involved in sharing with parents what they're actually learning in school. So with that, we'll turn it over to you two. Where do you want to set up?
In keeping with our student-led theme, we really want to put our students in the driver's seat. So Judy and I will be speaking, but they will be taking it away. So, Simon, if you want to start.
So, we think that student-led conferences are good for the students because they can take accountability and ownership for their own actions and that they, that the students can tell the parents what they know rather than traditional parent-teacher conferences. Who we are, we're the fourth grade Leonhardt Sanford team at BF Norton Elementary. The teachers are Ms. Brooke Ashley Leonhardt and Ms. Sanford. The students?
I'm Colin Lemoine.
I'm Elijah Wincoop.
I'm Jada Clazo.
I'm Simon Aiden. And we're the fourth grade team.
So one of the reasons that we went with student-led conferences is we're going with the instructional shifts that are happening in the educational world. And I want to put them up here, but the big theme is that we're moving away from the teacher being in the driver's seat to the students being in the driver's seat. We're moving away from that traditional teacher-led instruction where the teacher's at the front of the classroom, the teacher's making the moves, the students are following along step by step, to where the students are having to make decisions. We're giving them the tools to make those decisions and the materials and the guidelines, and they're getting to grow by getting themselves in the driver's seat. We want them to move away from feeling like they have a lack of confidence and have to come to us for everything they need and ask questions. We're trying to teach them to become more self-regulated, to be critical thinking, to persevere when they have issues and ask questions. And we're moving away from that fixed mindset, you know, I'm an A student, or I struggle with math, or ELA is not good for me mindset, focus on growth. So we want them to know that it's not about where you are compared to other students, but it's about pushing yourself forward and being in the seat to be able to do that as a student.
What student-led conferences is, is working together. The students and teachers work together to develop skills and put the students in the driver's seat so they're actively involved in reaching the goals.
So what does it look like? Our students are going to go ahead and explain that to you.
So what does it look like? Students can meet with the teachers at, like, at the back table of the classroom to discuss their progress.
Students reflect independently, and students reflect on their work without the teacher's help. And students reflect the goals during the year, and that gets approved by teachers.
Students developing action plans to reach goals with teacher assistance would be like, if I needed help with multiplication, the teacher could work with me with flashcards.
Students gather data points and pieces of evidence with teacher assistance.
Students practice to communicate their progress, goals, and plans as a team together so they can practice with their parents, or if you have an older sibling, and they can practice with the teachers as well.
Students presenting their progress, goals, and plans with their parents is the student showing their parents their progress during the year and their goals and their plans to help them do it. And parents reflecting alongside the student is the parents also helping the student reflect or revise on their work.
Parents assist the students in following action plans to reach the goals. So like, we come up like ways that we can reach our goals.
So this hap, all these things happen in a student-led conference, but it definitely takes time and it takes a lot of preparation. And so we've devised it into like three parts. We have the very beginning of the year, we have two to three weeks before conferences, and then we have the actual night of what would be a teacher conference, but becomes a student-led conference. And they're going to go ahead and explain that to you.
Teachers develop a growth-oriented classroom community, and we all learn how to work together, and we're all focused on growth. Then the teachers explain the basics of like what we need to know for fourth grade, and they introduce the scores, one to four, to their students. And like a one would be like, you don't get this at all, a two, like a limited understanding, and like a three, like a strong command, and a four is like you get everything and you could teach it to someone else. Then the teachers continuously communicate progress in terms of growth using scores one to four to students. Then the students, we just start practicing developing goals and brainstorm action steps towards those goals together.
So then, two to three weeks before conferences, so after they've built these skills and they have this understanding of what it means to work towards mastery, we start prepping them for conferences.
So two or three weeks before the conferences, the teachers create and fill out a student-friendly conference report aligned to report card indicators and standards. The students gather evidence and work from all content areas that display growth and create portfolios to keep all of our growth papers in. The students reflect on conference reports and create goals and action plans based off the scores and evidence, so we have action plans to grow.
The week of conferences, we spend a lot of time in class preparing.
The teachers meet with the students to review and approve goals slash action plans. And then the teachers explain how the student-led conferences will like work or run. And the teachers, they like pretend, one pretends that they're the mother or father, and then another pretends that they're the child, and they like show us what it would look like. And then the students work in partners doing the same thing as the teachers would do.
It's showtime.
Student portfolios from all contents and conference reports are in one area of the room, and there's three stations set up around the room. And there's usually two to three families scheduled for the same time. And there's twenty-minute timer displayed for the student pace to be with their parents at one of the three stations. And then the teachers will be circling around the room to assist and answer questions during it. And at the end, the teachers are available for specific questions and concerns after. And as the students films are leaving, they will reflect on their progress while leaving.
I have a couple snapshots.
Alright, so actually, after the conference, me and my dad had some extra time, so I showed him one of our science projects, was like a circuit board of a wire and a decel and a bulb.
So here's Jeremy with his parents. He's showing them his yellow phoner and his binder, which has all the papers to help you if you need help rather than asking the teacher. And there's Holly with her mother and sister showing her, showing them her charts and how she's grown throughout the year.
So some of the feedback that we had, when, like Jana said, as soon as families left the room, we had like a private place for them to make anonymous comments. There was a survey that Judy and I met and looked over, and here's information from that survey. So after the conferences, a hundred percent of the families that came to conferences agreed that their students were prepared or even over-prepared.
A hundred percent of families felt their student was able to communicate their progress well or very well.
So fifty-three percent of the families felt just as informed with the student-led conference as they would a traditional parent-teacher conference? And that's because forty percent of families felt more informed in this type of student-led conference than had they met with a traditional parent-teacher conference.
And eighty percent of families, if given a choice, would prefer the student-led conference over the traditional parent-teacher conference. And the remaining twenty percent would enjoy a hybrid.
So some of the comments that families shared with us on that forum anonymously. Very organized, well-prepared, my student was aware of his own strengths and weaknesses.
I love the student-led conference. It makes them an active participant in their learning.
It was nice to hear from him how he feels he's doing in class and actually see some of his work, rather than just seeing report cards like in a traditional parent-teacher conference.
And this was great.
And now we're going to let the students tell you why they liked having a student-led conference.
What I like student-led conferences is because, I liked it because the students can tell their parents how they're doing rather than the teacher, like, just assuming how the kids are doing based off report cards and grades and all of that. So it really shows how the student has grown rather than just being based off report cards and all of the grades.
Alright, I think this was actually a very good idea because it's coming from our opinion, like on how we think we're going in like our progress through the year and if we think that's enough. And I think it was like a very good idea.
I think it was a good idea because it came from first-person perspective, like we're the people that are learning, so we have like a better understanding of it.
And then I think, well, Judy and I will agree that we really enjoyed it. It was definitely an adventure for us. We've never done it before. So it was definitely a process, and we have definitely things that we'll be working on. But I think that we really enjoyed stepping back and watching them go through it. You just watched how they were totally able to present in front of you. And it's amazing to watch them speak to their parents about how they're doing. They had the scores in front of them, so they weren't just pulling out these goals from nowhere. They were able to look at data as a nine-year-old and say, well, I'm not doing so well with multiplication, I think that should be my goal. And then they were able to sit with us and talk to us and tell us what they were going to do to get better at that goal. And that took some of that ownership off and put it on them, which was really awesome to see. They're only nine and ten-year-olds, but let me tell you, these kids can run the show. They can act like high school students. We always tell them, it's just like college, and they can do it. So if they can show us now, we feel like it's helping them to be better prepared for their future. Thank you so much for giving this opportunity to present for you.
Mrs. Fogel, picture?
I just have a question in regards to it. So will this be kind of spread between all the other elementary schools and something to try, Mr. Mitchell or Mr. Demona?
Well, I think, and certainly, Mr. Demona can add his perspective on this, but this was, we looked at this as sort of a pilot. And obviously, things went really well, and I think it's, makes a lot of sense. And I think when a student actually has an opportunity to share what he or she is learning in school, I think it's a pretty powerful thing. And I think we're all surprised. Maybe that's not a fair thing to say, but I think many times we're surprised that how well our children can articulate what they're learning in school. And I think they may be learning things that we never even realize, even if we do have those conversations when they come home every day. So, you know, I do think, one of the things that stands out for me is the fact that students really take ownership of their learning, and they are able to articulate their strengths and weaknesses and that sort of thing. So I mean, I think it's something that we, it's a good thing. I think it's something that we should consider utilizing in other schools. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add to that.
So Brooke Ashley and Judy and I started discussing this over a year and a half ago. We had conversations, we had several meetings about it. It was actually an idea that started back when I was at Times Square Academy. We did flip parent conferences. And it was something that, you know, the state is moving towards a personalization type of educational model, and that's really what this is about. It's about personalized learning. And it's certainly something that, if it catches root, obviously, it was successful. The kids did a great job, the teachers did an amazing job of preparing them, and they are taking ownership. So it is something that can certainly spread to all of our classrooms at the elementary level in our schools and also the middle schools too.
Very nicely done, everybody.
I just want to say that was a great presentation. You guys did an excellent job. Thank you very much. Mr. Mitchell, is there anything else in the superintendent's report?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I think we're just going to take a couple minutes, in case anyone wants to leave, before we get on to the next part of the meeting. Okay, let's resume. Next up, we have report, oh, sorry, Chairperson's Report, FY 2018 Budget Update. We know that tonight, we're going to be balancing the budget, and the town council approved the town's budget for next year, and it leaves a hole in our budget of approximately $700,000. So we know that that's a bad situation. Nobody's happy about that, but we do need to close the gap because we have to have a balanced budget. So we're going to be dealing with that in a little bit. I don't have any other budget update besides that. So I think we can move on to Report of Standing Committees, Payment of Bills, Mr. Demonica.
Mr. Chairman, we did meet the other night and talk about payment of bills. We went through the register, and on a three-to-zero vote, we approved the payment of bills in the amount of $1,542,125.69, and I would make that in a motion for approval.
Mr. Demonica moves passage of payment of bills in the amount of $1,542,125.69. hundred forty-two thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. Pleasure with the committee?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, be in a motion. Second by Mr. Hess, all those in favor? I think that passes six-nothing. Thank you. Next up, Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update.
So, um, Mr. Chairman, we did talk a couple of items additional last, um, Tuesday night, and one was the, um, this budget that's coming up, um, in regards to the next year. And, uh, resolution in regards to, uh, unassigned fund allocation. And we did talk about this year's budget and where we stand and how we think we're gonna close at the end of the year. Thank you.
Mr. DeMonica, uh, next up is Policy and Procedure Subcommittee Update, Mr. Fiorillo.
Fortunately, policy was not able to meet this evening. Um, we will be meeting, hopefully, by, before the end of June. Uh, we do have some things we need to get done before July one, uh, so I'm not really sure when that time will be done.
Uh, next up is Achievement and Communications Subcommittee. Uh, we had a meeting, I, I'm the chair of that committee, Subcommittee. We had a meeting last week where we talked about some changes at North Cumberland Middle School that they're planning for next year. Um, the first part of the discussion was some of the changes to the scheduling and, uh, how AE is, uh, changing or going away, and there will now be a plus block. Um, I'm probably describing this incorrectly, uh, but there will be six periods a day over eight days, uh, kind of rotated over eight days. Um, it was, it was a really excellent presentation, I have to say. Um, it looked, it, it, the, um, Mrs. Coughlin and the team, uh, did a great job presenting the, the changes and the reasoning behind them, uh, so it was impressive all around. Um, but the next part of the discussion was about, uh, sixth through eighth grade math at North Cumberland. Um, again, this was a, a great presentation. I think, um, we all learned a lot and we appreciated the amount of work that went into, uh, all of the, the decisions they're making about, um, math at North Cumberland. And, um, I don't know, Mrs. Coughlin, do you wanna say anything about this, or, um, I, 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 I'm not doing a good job, uh, describing it. Yeah, right. I think you need to talk to a microphone. Yeah, sorry. Sorry to make you do this.
Thank you, Mr. Dennan. It was, uh, quite a bit of work that was done by the entire team at North Cumberland Middle School to really look at student data and determine what can we as a school do to improve the instruction that we, and, um, that we offer at North Cumberland Middle School. So it was truly a team effort. Um, the teachers are, are excited and, um, have been working hard preparing for next year. We also, um, looked at how we place students in, in math programs and, and what is in the best interest of students based on a lot of factors, and we came up with some criteria that we feel very comfortable with. Again, um, the focus at North Cumberland Middle School is, uh, is, uh, student learning, uh, really focused on the impact of, of what we're doing to positively affect student learning. So, thank you, and I appreciate all of the, uh, the feedback from the school committee as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I can speak for the Subcommittee to say that we were just impressed at the way you went about, uh, identifying the problem, finding solutions to the problem, and then presenting the po, uh, the solutions to us. So thank you very much, appreciate it. Next up, we have District Health and Wellness Subcommittee Update. Mr. Mitchell, is there any update for that?
Yes, uh, yes, there is. A lot of work has been done over the course of the school year. We actually have, um, um, both, uh, Dr. Jay Masterson and Julie Alfano, um, they are, um, co-chairing the, the committee, and it really is, uh, an exciting, um, group who are actively involved in this, um, um, in, in wellness, uh, improving wellness in the district. So I know Jay and Julie are here to share some information, uh, with all of you. I'd also like to recognize Karen, Karen Witherell, who has been incredibly helpful to us over the last couple of years. Um, Karen is the person who really, um, helped us to facilitate the revisions to the district wellness policy. Um, Karen, are you a consultant, or are you, uh, do you work for the Department of Health, or? I, I just wanted to, um, publicly acknowledge, um, the good work that you've done and all the support that you've given us. I mean, you really have been incredibly helpful in, in helping us to, um, um, sort of rejuvenate, uh, this whole, uh, committee, and we've come a long way in a short period of time. So, take, yeah, yeah, that is true. Dr. Masterson.
Mr. Mitchell. Also recognize, uh, other members of the committee who are here today. Uh, Mr. Salvatore is not, uh, who is the chair. But also, we have Nidikar Bonak, who's the principal element, Ashen Elementary School, Lisa Parker, school social worker at Cumberland High School, Shawna Splain from Sedexo Food Services. Karen, you have already introduced. Uh, so looking at the policies of health and wellness, uh, we wanted to look at our purpose, what we were trying to do. We're always focused on students, obviously, we're an educational environment, uh, but we also, looking at faculty and staff as well. Uh, and once we're able to work within the school system between students and faculty and staff, then we can start to really reach community. And I know that we're coming off the budget season, uh, and one of the things that, you know, we wanna always be able to display is the work that we do impacts our greater community. Uh, and I think that we're gonna be getting to that point, uh, in the next three to five years. So we first, our first task, uh, starting in January was to conduct a needs assessment, uh, and one of the great relationships we have with Karen is to be able to get resources available to us from the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition. Uh, so we used their survey to be able to conduct surveys within each school to see where we were with health and wellness against the policy, to see where we were falling short on the policy, and we were meeting it as best as we could. One of the things that obviously we found, uh, is that the perception within the district is that health and wellness is all about eating, and it's very regulatory and it's very restrictive. Uh, in actuality, it's supposed to be a vision for positivity. Uh, so one of our first goals was to be able to try and change that perception. Uh, also, we noticed that there was an inconsistent implementation of the health and wellness policy from building to building, uh, so we wanted to be able to start to develop a unified vision for health and wellness. Uh, one of the biggest components that's missing, and obviously, uh, currently in the media, you're going to see a lot of it, if you haven't already, uh, is socio-emotional awareness. Uh, a lot of our students are coming to school with different kinds of needs socially and emotionally, and, uh, we wanted to make sure that we addressed that area, although it's not specifically addressing the policy, that's gonna be some policy work we do in the fall, uh, to be able to add that component in, because we find it's really important. Uh, we do have curriculum work that does go on in schools, uh, regarding second steps as an example. Uh, we wanna make sure that it's explicit and it's known, that, that's an area we want to address. Obviously, as the school committee, you know that, uh, you adopted the Whole Child Initiative, uh, and signed a resolution for that, uh, and there's no better way to do that than to link the health and wellness policy to the Whole Child Initiative. Uh, so we obviously intervene academically, nutritionally, physically, but also socially and emotionally. Uh, so we're now, as a district, using the policy, going to be able to, uh, look at the whole child, uh, through the entire school day. One of the goals is, our vision is to increase faculty and staff awareness. Uh, that is not a, a negative and regulatory policy, but actually, it's more of a vision. Uh, and also, there's been a lot of curriculum work. I know Mr. DeMona is very familiar with the curriculum work that's going on between the phys ed and health curriculum, uh, especially K through eight. Uh, so we're going to be getting those maps up on the, uh, official website, so, so everyone's aware of, you know, we're not just rolling the ball out there, and, you know, obviously, tonight was a great night to recognize a lot of our phys ed and health, uh, teachers who have started from the beginning of this district, uh, regarding health and wellness, and where we are today. Where it's more about team building, it's more about development, it's more about ways that you can take what you learn at school and be able to take, apply it to a lifelong lesson and continue to grow. Uh, it's, it's not just about team sports and competition. And with that said, one of the things that Mr. Mitchell, uh, when he and Mr. Salvatore looked for, uh, support in leading this initiative, uh, when Ms. Alfano and I agreed that we would come on, one of the things that, uh, we felt was important is that the strategic plan had health and wellness in it. If we're gonna put some meat behind this policy, we need to make sure that we have a unified vision for the entire district. So, uh, we did accomplish that through Mr. Mitchell's leadership, uh, and the leadership of the Strategic Planning Committee. Uh, so in the plan that you will be soon approving, we will have a three-to-five-year strategic plan addressing health and wellness, which we're extremely excited about. One of the goals that we had when setting up the, uh, the new committee was to add to it. Uh, we noticed that we didn't have a lot of socio-emotional professionals, uh, on the Subcommittee, so what we did was we put out an all-call for anyone who'd like to join the Health and Wellness Committee, knowing that we're going to be moving in a, in a new direction, uh, and we actually doubled, within a month and a half, our membership from approximately eighteen to twenty to almost forty-two. Uh, so we're really excited that we can get a lot of work done with a lot of hands. Uh, and also, there's a lot of diverse perspectives, uh, now on the, the Health and Wellness Committee, uh, that we can all pull from. So we divided our group up into subgroups so that we can have, uh, focus and everyone would have tasks to complete. We noticed that when we come to meetings, a lot of people come and support the meetings, but, uh, the work that happens between meetings was hard to get done. Uh, so setting up in Subcommittee's with leadership, uh, is the direction we're going to be going in for next year, um, now that we have a singular focus moving forward. And I'm, this time, I'm gonna call up Shawna, uh, to talk about our relationship with, uh, Sedexo. We're excited, uh, about having Shawna's leadership on the Health and Wellness Committee. Uh, we routinely will throw new ideas at her, and she throws it back at us, uh, and we're moving in a, in a great direction nutritionally for our district and it's a tribute to her leadership. Shawna?
Thank you, Jay, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to, obviously, um, everyone about some of the hard work that we do behind the scenes, uh, from a nutrition aspect. Um, so, as an active member of the Subcommittee Wellness, um, I'm here also representing Sedexo as our committee, and I wanted to just speak about some of the things that we've done behind the scenes, uh, with our products that align with our strategic, uh, plan, and those are some of the products that we already serve. Um, so going forward this year in sixteen-seventeen, we have, uh, reviewed and implemented a hundred percent of our Rhode Island Smart Snack, um, and we've also implemented a free, gluten-free and vegetarian options. Uh, we've seen an increase of fifteen percent of our student population asking for these items, so we've kind of been ahead of the curve, um, with using some of the vegetarian options available for our students. Also, fresh fruit and vegetables has been a drive for the Wellness Committee. Uh, we've seen a twenty-five percent increase on our menus of using those items. And we are a local campaign, it's very big in Rhode Island, that we use our local products that are sustainable, um, to the area, uh, our dairy we align with, and also, uh, Pezza Farms, we use a lot of produce from that farm and we menu it. Some of the events that we've done, um, we're partnering with Farm Fresh Rhode Island, we've done, um, monthly produce promotion on our menus, sampling, um, at some of our sites, mostly elementary and middle schools, um, getting those products to the students so they can sample. We did a kale, uh, sweet potato, um, we've also done arugula, strawberries, things like that, really promoting them on the menu. Another event we've done is the Wake Up Breakfast, which was a national school breakfast month that we solicited Hot 106, um, the two radio personalities to come in and promote breakfast for our high school students. Uh, we did see an uptick in our participation with that. Also, the Healthy High School Challenge, uh, nationally, we placed ninth place, uh, and we were awarded a hundred, um, sorry, excuse me, a thousand-dollar scholarship, um, that we actually donated to our courtyard farm, um, garden, I can't even think of the words, sorry, garden, uh, that we were actually able to donate to them so they could, um, grow dirt, certain things that we can menu. We also had another event, it was our Future Chef, which is geared towards our elementary. Um, it was the, actually, it was a healthy aspect on some of the comfort foods that we see. So the students at the, um, K through fifth grade were able to come in and cook, um, something that they had planned and showcase that, and, uh, we had a lot of fun doing that event. Uh, we also do other community events, you know, welcoming new kindergartens or some community events, uh, outreach in for nutrition. So these are some of the things that we currently do. And I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the things we're planning for the end of this year and next year, uh, that are strategically aligned with our, you know, number-two strategic, strategic plan of health and wellness. Uh, so we have a project going on right now, it's the Generation X Project. Um, it's trying to reach out to some of our students that use social media, so we have an Instagram account, and I would encourage everyone in this room to follow us, it's Clipper underscore eats. Uh, we post every single day, uh, our menu items, the events that we do, um, and it's just trying to get everybody hyped up about what we do every day, um, so I would encourage everyone to, again, follow us. Along with that, uh, we also have digital screens that are in our high schools, um, that showcase some of our menu items, some of our promotional events that we're doing with vendors, um, some of our monthly, um, the vegetables that we promote, any advertising or partnerships with, again, those Hot 106 or the, uh, Pezza Farms, we do promote a lot of that there. I know Generation X now, they like to see all that digital media, so we like to not just have things on paper, we like to promote it in front of them, so it's been, uh, you know, a really good thing for them to be able to participate in. Uh, we also partner with Freight Farms, um, hopefully, we're gonna be getting a container farm that is a hydroponic farm that is sustainable with produce growth on-site, that will be able to use, uh, fresh herbs and some vegetables, uh, mainly lettuces and green vegetables. And it also partners with student curriculums, so anybody that's in the botany program or any type of, um, you know, technology when it comes to sustainable farm growth will be able to, um, you know, use some type of projects for our, with our Freight Farms. And it's also a showcase for, um, this type of thing. It's the first in the state, so it's pretty exciting, uh, or be able to bring this to a high school in Rhode Island. So we're really excited about that for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Shawna. One of the other advantages, uh, of having Shawna is, uh, she's pretty technology adept, and, um, one of the things I asked her to do is to give me a one-month summary of the purchases that our students are making at McCord for lunch and breakfast, uh, because I wanted to see what they were making choices. And, uh, one of the things that jumped out is, as she pointed out, that students are not taking fruit. They have up to six slides, sides? They're taking one side, they could have taken six, uh, with all their purchases. Uh, so at one of our school-wide assemblies, I challenged all the students to take all the fruit that they're expected to have when they make purchases, and that next week, they're all gone. Uh, so once you lay out an expectation for a student in middle school, uh, they tend to meet it. Uh, so it's a constant reminder, uh, but that's the kind of nutritional pieces that, uh, students just won't make their own choice at that time, so you have to kind of remind them. Uh, so I appreciate that kind of responsiveness when I ask for things, uh, to help our students. Um, moving on to the next slide is our three-to-five-year vision for the district for health and wellness is to focus on mindfulness. I did speak about the socio-emotional needs that our students have, uh, and this is really where we came down to deciding what we need to be moving forward towards. So I'm actually gonna ask, uh, Ms. Lisa Parker to come up, uh, and speak about mindfulness.
Hello. Um, so, I was so happy to hear that the Health and Wellness Committee was looking at, and also, School Committee was looking at the whole child, because that has been my focus all along. Um, and when we think about some of our students not coming to school in that ready-to-learn space, that's where mindfulness comes into being. I was not prepared really to do this, um, but, but I am. I am so excited about the thought of, of embracing mindfulness at a universal level, pre-K to twelve. We have all of our support staff, our guidance counselors, our, uh, psychologists, the social workers, um, and many of the special educators that support students at a secondary and tertiary level, helping those students who are, are really struggling with some social skills and anxiety and depression. But there are many, many more students that we never get to meet, that really could use some of these, these same skills. And so, um, mindfulness- And so mindfulness, if we look at this from a universal perspective, something that is done in every single classroom with every teacher, a, a time to settle oneself, a time to really get focused. The research really supports this being done. Toxic stress impairs attention, emotional, emotion and mood regulation, sleep and learning readiness. I cannot tell you the upsurge that I have seen in anxiety in the last, at least definitely in the, in the past five years. Some of that is, is augmented by the sleep that kids are not, are not getting. I don't know if that's just because I'm at the high school and I see that more, but also kids who are in families who are under, um, increased stress. Those, those families are, those households are not leading themselves very well to, to good sleep habits either. As well as all the technology that kids are now exposed to, they have a really hard time shutting off their phones. So what mindfulness will do is to target all students. But not only the students, this is going to target our staff. We can't teach mindfulness if we're not mindful ourselves as a staff. And then ultimately to reach out beyond our students to the families. Because if we can really embrace our families and support our families, that's doing the best service for our students. It's going to improve self-regulation, which hopefully will show some improvements in it, uh, in con, our conduct referrals. It's going, the research supports that it improves coping strategies in terms of anxiety, in terms of anger management, um, resiliency for when things do go wrong that are unexpected. And certainly attention in all of the everyday classes and lessons being taught. If students are given the opportunity to settle and become mindful, then their brains also get settled and get ready to receive the information. I could not be more excited to be moving down the path of mindfulness.
Thank you, Mrs. Parker. We're available for questions?
So what, what is the, the mindfulness, like what's sort of the next step?
So the next step is for you to approve the strategic plan. And then when you approve the strategic plan, uh, we're going to be setting up in our committees, uh, over the summer. Uh, we're going to start to be researching strategies that you can implement in classrooms right away, uh, utilizing a menu process, similar to what we did with PBIS when we started nine years ago. There's one of the things that, uh, we've discovered over the last month is that a lot of commonalities, uh, and a lot of synchronization that can take place when we look at PBIS and mindfulness. Uh, so, uh, those are some immediate goals that we have, but also long-term goals regarding training. Uh, so Mr. Mitchell and I, uh, met with Mrs. Coughlin, uh, and, uh, the Blackstone Valley Prevention Coalition, uh, and they also utilize a lot of mindfulness techniques. Uh, so they're going to be a, a natural marriage for us to be able to work with. Uh, and also they're, uh, available to grants and those kinds of things to allow us to get, uh, training and also curriculum work, uh, so that we can provide packaged curriculums to look at, uh, so we have a starting base, uh, to work off of. Uh, and then also starting to provide opportunities for faculties and staffs to be able to practice mindfulness during professional development opportunities. As Mrs. Parker said, uh, we can't just expect we have to do as well. Uh, so when we do, we can then expect and then support.
And, um, how many members did you say this, the committee has, the subcommittee?
We're, we're a lower forties.
That's awesome. So I, I think, um, and I, I, I'm copied on a bunch of the emails and I see the dedication and the amount of time that people put in. And I speak for the committee when I say we appreciate everyone's hard work on this.
We appreciate the support.
Thank you. Next up, comments from the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak? No comments? Okay. Okay, so now we're onto new business, um, School Bus Logistics, Presentation of Student Transportation Study. Mr. Mitchell?
As you know, uh, school committee members, uh, over the, the last year, uh, you all have supported, um, a study to be conducted. Uh, our goal is to create a later start time for our secondary students, especially the high school. A high school student starts school in Cumberland earlier than anyone else in the state. And we know that there has been, um, a wealth of research and, and it's growing, uh, research on the fact that adolescents, uh, actually, it's not just adolescents. We all don't get enough sleep, but, um, teenagers certainly are not getting the sleep that they need for their developing brains and it impacts every facet of their lives. So with the school committee's support, we were able to hire a consultant and, uh, Robert Jacobus is here this evening from School Bus Logistics and he has a brief presentation for all of you. I, I, I think you all, um, had a chance to, um, see the presentation. I know that Cindy put it in your drive, um, and he's here to, um, share his presentation with you and answer any questions that you may have. Robert?
And, um, we, um, were chosen as the consulting firm to take on this analysis for the district as far as what, um, what it would look like to bring in the high school students an hour later, um, from their current bell schedule. And as I said, we're here to, uh, present, uh, what it would look like to do a later start time with the least amount of impact from, uh, on the other schools and also looking at the staffing requirements to see what that would look like as far as how many additional bus routes that would take and what that impact would be. And also what we're doing is what we've done is we've done a vehicle utilization, which is, um, basically taking all the individual bus runs and reconfigure them to create route packages to see what is the most, uh, most efficient way to route those school buses with the least amount of deadhead time and deadhead mileage. Currently, um, the district is running, um, twenty-seven, uh, current big bus routes. So that you have an idea of, uh, currently what the, uh, total number of bus routes it is today. Um, and here we provided four deliverables in this analysis and the first deliverable is a data review and preparation. And what that entailed was, uh, looking at, um, high school depot stops and looking at what it would look like if some of the high school students were to walk a little further to the bus stops within a mile to see if that could reduce the overall total number of, uh, timing and buses for the high school routes. Currently, there are a hundred and forty-six high school stops. And after the analysis, we were able to reduce forty-two stops after identifying consolidation or compressions of the high school stops. We used, um, the Versatrans routing software program that Durham School Services allowed us to use on their servers. So all this data and analysis is, is stored and in kept with Durham School Services at the current time. As you can see here, uh, we've also produced, um, three scenarios for your, for review. Uh, we list here the current bell schedule and then we can look at scenario one, which would be looking at, um, bringing in elementary school students in a seven fifty start, middle school at a nine o'clock start and a high school at eight twenty start. The goal was to bring in the high school students later, but what other scenarios would look like if we just flip-flopped a bunch of things around? The challenge is, is that, uh, the high school, uh, has a six-hour and forty-minute day and all the other schools have a six-hour and twenty-five minute day. So that, that high school timing in the middle of all the, uh, scenarios is, was the challenge. And so we knew what we, uh, wanted to do was create the, uh, a, a perfect scenario or a recommended scenario, but we also wanted to go in and, and produce, uh, other scenarios just to do some comparisons. From past experience, we would produce one scenario and then we would go back to the drawing board several times to say, well, what if we did this and what if we did that? So what we've done is we've just provided those what-ifs upfront, just to, just to rule out that the, you know, bringing in elementary school first, what would that impact be? And we'll go through some of these scenarios in, in a little bit of detail and a summary coming up on a few slides. And if you guys have any questions at any time, please feel free to speak up. Uh, deliverable two is, uh, what we did was a feeder school layout. Basically, what we've done is identified which schools should pair with which schools geographically as they lay out. Uh, for instance, we would take the PM routes. So a bus would show up at a school, uh, and deliver students and it, and would typically have a last bus stop. So we would evaluate from that last bus stop in the afternoon, where's the quickest school that that bus could get to before the bell would ring for the next set of schools? So that analysis was done geographically. And also Durham School Services recommended some suggestions as well. Um, and also in this, um, scenario, all runs in the afternoon, uh, schools would arrive five minutes before the bell. So we were trying to be cautious of if, what would it look like if we made sure that all of the school buses could be there before students get released so that there's no students running around while buses are trying to get onto school properties? Um, deliverable three, reroute for capacity. Uh, we've obtained, uh, obtained, uh, load counts from the bus drivers from Durham and we were able to go through and, and do an analysis on, um, uh, capacity of actual riders. So if a, if, if a bus route, a high school bus route had a hundred and twenty-five eligible students and we only identified twenty-five students at each of those stops, we were able to use actual data from the bus drivers for a week period. And this is what helped us create for the baseline. And as you can see here on this slide here, we can identify the current total buses required that you're running now. Um, there are eighty-one current bus runs for all of the schools. And at the end of the analysis, uh, at the baseline, uh, at the end of the analysis, we were able to reduce ten buses overall from the district from various schools. That was just an analysis from the load counts as well.
Did you look at, at the population or just the load counts?
Just the eligible, just the load counts, yeah.
Not the eligible?
No, uh-uh. So, yeah, just the eligible, or, uh, actual students. And it was just a numbers game at that point. So we would just randomly choose if there's fifty students eligible at a corner and only, and Durham identified that they're only picking up ten students, well, we've just identified ten students to be able to, uh, put in the analysis.
Were you able to analyze year to year, go back a couple of years and see how, you know, as the kids move up in the grade levels, you know, how that worked?
Uh, no, we did not take historical data. I don't even think, uh, in the data sets of the routing software that, that data goes back that far. Yeah. Uh, here's an example of what it would looks like. Uh, it's a, this is what's called a multi-view in the routing software. It just depicts for, for Garvin Elementary School, what the, what the routes look like as an overlay to see, um, uh, where the overlap is and where the inefficiencies are to, to make recommendations to make them more efficient. Okay.
One question?
Yes.
We had mentioned in the beginning that because of the stat times or the amount of time the students spend in the school, the high school was six forty and the six hours and forty minutes and the elementary was six?
Six hours and twenty-five minutes?
If that changed to the same amount of time that the high school spent, how would that, did you look at that and?
No, we did not look at changing the actual length of contact teacher hours in these scenarios, no.
Would it, would it help us?
Absolutely. It, it, it would, could have an impact, yes. And that, and we actually did that with another district out in Colorado. Uh, there's a state recommended, uh, hours for schools and they were above the state recommended hours. So they, and looked at, uh, what it would look like if they did go to, uh, the state recommended. And they also do early release days once a week, and I believe you guys, uh, as well do that. Um, so they've decided to go from a two-hour minimum, uh, two-hour early release down to a one-hour release, which would increase the length of day to help with the scenario. So that was evaluated as well at that particular school district. Very good. Um, deliverable four, the bell schedule analysis scenario. Scenario one, uh, this is just looking at bringing in elementary schools at the same time at a seven fifty start, uh, middle school at a nine o'clock start, um, a high school eight twenty. And the two, uh, Mercy Mount, uh, the non-public school was also can taken consideration in this analysis. And we did move that bell time around to help with these efficiencies as well. And in this particular scenario, it would require an, uh, uh, a total route packages of forty routes. Some of the, the issues here was that some of the high school, uh, routes were too long and couldn't make it to the elementary schools in the afternoon, which would create an increase. Uh, scenario two, uh, just bringing in, keeping eight thirty and nine o'clock for the elementary schools, seven fifty start for middle school and that eight twenty start at the high school. And again, that high school time was the anchor time that didn't get moved around too much. This would bring in, uh, forty-one routes in the morning and fifty-one routes in the afternoon. And again, just because, um, nine of those high school buses would not be able to get to the elementary schools in the afternoon because of that timing and that short, short distance. And what we found was when we did the analysis on the high school routes, we were able to cut seven bus routes and load up the high school bus routes. But once we started doing the tiering and the analysis, we ended up putting routes back into the high school just to make the timings work. So we would go from like a, a packed fifty, fifty-count route for high school back down to twenty-five just because of the, the, uh, impact of where that high school bell time kind of fit in everything. All right. Scenario three, just again, uh, forty, forty-two routes in the morning, fifty-one routes in the afternoon, uh, bringing in, now flip-flopping, uh, elementary school in at seven thirty and then eight o'clock, uh, and then middle school in at eight forty. So we just did go around and around and look at different possibilities of how, how, if we moved bell times around, which one would give us the most desirable outcome for the least amount of bus routes? And the last one, scenario four, which was, uh, probably the most favorable, uh, scenario that we put together, was bringing in all of the elementary schools in at nine o'clock, middle school in at seven thirty-five and pushing that high school back to an eight oh five instead of an eight twenty. And this would increase, uh, route packages to thirty-four, total route packages. So an increase of seven buses. Uh, and also in the analysis, we, we were able to determine that, um, some of the, there's three high school buses, um, that are quite long because they service the northern part of the district. So therefore it was hard to tier those buses, bringing them back down to the southern part of the district. If those longer buses were split in half yet again to, to be shorter, then we would be able to pair a lot more of those three high school routes and, uh, actually reduce, um, the, the scenario four to thirty-one routes. And again, it's just throwing the efficiencies of the high school routes out the door because then you're back to twenty-two routes. Uh, and then this scenario, uh, high school departs eight minutes after the bell. And also in this scenario, all middle school and elementary school buses would depart six minutes after the bell, just to get their load up and then depart to school. We do eight minutes for the high school because Durham had asked for that time because of getting the congestion of the high school buses out of the high school. And here is just a snapshot or screenshot of what the, uh, the fleet schedule looks like out of Versatrans, uh, what, how we used. You can see that the orange routes are the middle school routes, purple are the high school routes, green are the elementary routes and the pink are the Mercy, Mercy Mount routes. And this is just showing us how they all kind of stack up. And I think this particular screenshot was from scenario four. And we would duplicate this into different scenarios throughout the software. And then the last screenshot here is just an overview of the total route packages by count. As you can see on the far left, current AM twenty-seven buses. Scenario one, morning buses, which is the one AM and the one PM. Route scenario, scenario twos, three and four, just to show you the stack of, uh, what the, uh, total route packages would be for each of the scenarios. Questions?
Yes, did any of the walking distances change in your, um, proposal here or is it still, if you were a mile and a half away, you were still a mile and a half?
Correct, that is correct, yeah.
Mr. Mitchell, do we have the capability of increasing the elementary and middle school times to match the high school time? Contract-wise?
You mean, well, that would, that would have to be negotiated. I mean, certainly, we're entering the end of this, I think this is the last year of the contract, 17, 18, so we'll be negotiating a new contract and certainly we can bring
Can we use vans in this town to transport kids? Would vans be advantage to us versus a full bus if it wasn't needed?
Typically, most vans are used just for the special needs routes. I believe we decided, I think there were six or seven special needs routes that were not a part of this evaluation. But for vehicle utilization, it would not make sense to use vans because then if you did run a high school route with 15 students on it unfortunately, then that bus would be limited as to what it could do throughout the entire day and what you pay for.
I'm not sure if I understood when you were talking about load counts. Can we, can we base our bus routes on load counts instead of what the population is? Are we allowed to do that? I mean, that's saying that people have to sign off on not using a bus, is that?
Well, one of the things that we have been talking about doing, in fact, we decided that a letter should go out within the next month or so, asking parents, you know, due to our, you know, our budget circumstances, asking them to let us know whether or not they're going to be utilizing bus transportation or not. And I know that a couple of districts, I've mentioned this before, have done that and they've actually been able to eliminate. Well, interestingly enough, one of the conversations that we had today was about the cost of buses. And I think, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, you were right, it's like $84,000 for special ed bus because special ed buses require, you know, additional staff on the bus to accommodate the needs of the students riding them. And the big buses are 62, right? So if we can save a bus, you know, that's a teacher.
I think that, to answer your question, though, there was a change in state law this past year that allowed, that allows districts to do what we're suggesting, yeah. So, and I'm, Mr. Mitchell, I know Lincoln has sent out a letter to their parents. I don't know if we know anyone there that we could talk to. I can get a copy of the letter if?
Yeah, I actually have a copy of a letter that was sent out in some other school districts. So we'll, we'll be doing that soon.
Great. I also wonder if even making the high school start time just a few minutes later would, would be possible, you know? I know we're talking about drastic changes and we would love drastic changes, but even 10 minutes would help students. Mark shaking his head, so.
As some of you know, I've been meeting with a group which includes State Rep Casmero from North Kingston, who's been spearheading the later start time bill, which is actually gaining traction surprisingly in the House. In order to make any real difference, we have to be bold, we have to actually make a significant time change. 10 minutes won't do anything other than, quite honestly, change our, change it by 10 minutes, that's all it's gonna do. It's not gonna have any real impact on students.
I'm just saying, if we can't afford changing by an hour, is it worth it to change? And you're saying no.
Not in my opinion.
Any other questions?
Hi. Was public transportation ever figured into this thought? I know there's a Riptobus that runs up and down Mendon Road in the morning. I wasn't sure if we could utilize that to bring high school students up. And, I'm sorry, I didn't see it in the report. Is there actual bus counts attached to each of the? So that would give us the total number of buses for each option? Okay, and what exactly does the, the bus depot do for us other than save time? Because it really won't change the number of students on that bus, will it? Bus depots, yeah, depot stops rather.
Okay, and as part of the study? Also, were any locations identified as potential depot stops or was it more of a philosophical look at it?
So we did kind of both, both of those, a combination of those. So if we had a high school route that had 15 stops on it, we would look at how the impact would be if we combined some of the stops that are close to each other to one stop. And so it wouldn't require the bus to go around, you know, a neighborhood, three or four blocks, but, and having those students walk down to a main road, it would prevent that bus from having to travel and make those additional stops to reduce those. So it was a combination of combining stops, plus also looking at potentially a park, a church parking lot and stuff like that to use as a depot stop. And I, the most impact that we had was in the southern part of the district. The northern part of the district was more rural, so it wasn't as, as useful as we thought it would be for the northern part of the district.
There's mention about changing the, the bell times at Mercy Mount. I assume that's something that would have to be negotiated with them or not in a position to dictate the bell times.
I know we're required to provide their transportation, but.
I would imagine that, you know, they would have to be brought into the conversation. But since, you know, there are buses, there.
One more, I mean, if we decided contract-wise changing time that the teachers are in the schools and whatnot, how soon would this data that you've compiled be obsolete for us? Would it still be valuable two years from us, two years from now or?
I, I, I think the elementary data would probably be outdated, but as far as high school students go and the, what routes they ride and what stops you identify don't, won't go out of date. But definitely the elementary and the middle would. I don't know if there's an increase of population in the district or if there's a decrease. And the, also, the other thing that we would need to take into consideration that there's school buildings that are increasing their, their classroom sizes versus others. So that would have an impact two years down the road. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. You're welcome.
Next up is appointment by chair pursuant to policy B3 of school committee, of the school committee, members for website construction working group. So I've talked to the chair about this, Mr. Salvatore. We've had some discussions about redoing the district website or at least rethinking it and, and planning for, for redoing it. Mr. Chandler's been taking the lead on that and Mrs. Goggan and I have wanted to work on this, I think, and we, this is something we do for our day jobs too. So the chair, just to let everyone know that we're gonna be working on this working group. It's not going to be an official subcommittee of the school committee, it's just a working group to, to get something done on the, the website. So there's no vote on that. Next up, we have discussion and/or vote to approve, actually, does anyone have any questions on that before I? Thank you. Discussion and/or vote to approve overnight student field trip, CHS seniors grad night trip Orlando, Florida, April 2018. Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. Chairman, Nicole Lanny and Michelle McIntosh have been waiting very patiently to have the opportunity to ask you for your support once again of this trip.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Lanny. This is my co-advisor, Michelle McIntosh. We are here tonight to ask for your approval for the traditional grad night 2018. Michelle and I will be taking over for Kate McMorrow and Audrey Barthium as the co-advisors for grad night. We have been and will continue to work closely with them to make sure that this trip runs as smooth as it has been for the past 28 years. So for more than 20 years, this trip has successfully, successfully taken hundreds of seniors for a four-day to Florida to experience travel, responsibility, and excursions. This past year, four chaperones took 26 students to Florida for the grad night trip. They had one teacher per seven students. Students had a remarkable time and they had much positive feedback from students, teachers, and parents. The students were so well behaved that they received multiple compliments from airport and hotel staff as well as other Disney staff. This year, we are asking to travel to Disney on April 26 through the 29th in 2018. The itinerary will look much like this past years, but we will not know the travel time, flight numbers, and hotel accommodations until this fall. I have been in contact with our travel agent and the cost of the trip will be approximately $1,250 per student. We're hoping that you will approve this overnight field trip request so we can continue this longstanding tradition at Cumberland High School.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do have one question. I know you mentioned the price, but now with Allegiant Airlines coming into Providence and they're gonna fly to Orlando, does our, or your travel agency kind of figure that into and see if we can lower the cost and get more children to participate in having another low-cost airline? Or could you make them aware of it?
I believe they do their best to make it as low as possible for our kids. Just with the increase of everything in our world, the, the price has gone up a little bit to this current price. But we do do fundraising. The kids fundraise through sweatpants. They're able to sell sweatpants and they receive $10 per pair that can go towards their trip so they can fundraise and have the opportunity to, to come with us.
Any other questions? Pleasure of the committee? Mrs. Goggan makes a motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Demodica. Any discussion? All those in favor? That passes six-nothing. Thank you, have fun. Next up is discussion and/or vote to approve FY 2018 amended school budget. I know that this has been discussed quite a bit and in the fiscal subcommittee, I, I don't know who, who wants to take it, Mr. Mitchell or Mr. Demodica?
I'll start it and then we'll go from there. This was addressed upstairs in fiscal on Tuesday, knowing that what the town was gonna give us for funding for the year going forward. And we had a challenge to make up a lot of money to keep, to keep this district moving forward. And we are about $750,000 to $800,000 shy. And that changes daily considering students coming into the district. We may have to bring another kindergarten teacher in. The state saying how much you gotta pay for workman's comp, that's changed as well in the last few days. So we've come up with a budget based on what the town will give us, and the town was generous, but it's not gonna save every position that we wanted to. The proposed budget is gonna be $66,453,486. And that's a balanced budget with the amount of the appropriation between state aid and what the town will give us. The only caveat to this is there is a $300,000 appropriation from the town, from a rebate from National Grid that they will give us when they get the money. And it was voted on at the town council first vote that that would be maintenance of effort money going forward. And they are picking up our leases, lease payments this year and going forward as well, I believe. And that's allowed us about another $750,000 worth of money to stay in the district and, you know, keep more teachers involved. So, you know, we are gonna lose some, some positions here in the district. We are making some changes as well with elementary band and going to a different type of stipend in for that. And reluctantly, fiscal voted three to zero to send the budget downstairs for approval. I know Mr. Mitchell has talked at town council meetings about this, has met with the mayor as well. He may have a few Jewish words to say, but it's to keep the district forward and, you know, we would hate to lose any teacher because once you lose them, you don't get them back. But it is the, it is what's happening. I mean, this is the best year we've ever had in the Cumberland School District, getting money from the town. We got the maximum 4%. We got the additional 300. And we got the, the master lease payments covered where Mr. Pignano gave a presentation last night as well about starting additional master lease, leases so we can fix boilers and asbestos removal and things like that. So it did pass upstairs three to zero and I would move passage of the budget.
Passage of the budget?
Second for discussion.
Great, second for, Mr. Fiorello, seconds for discussion. Do you have anything to discuss? Mr. Mitchell, can you, can you talk a little bit about the changes?
You asking for like the overall changes that we have?
Yes.
Well, first of all, I, I think Mr. Demodica did a nice job of summarizing where we are. There is no question that we have spent a tremendous amount of time in an effort to balance the budget. We knew that we were in a position, regardless of the significant increase in money that we received from the town, that we still had to make cuts. And because we are already as lean as lean can be, we knew that the only way to get to the number that we needed to get to was to unfortunately eliminate some staff. So we have been able to, to, to save some money with things like energy improvements, but we know that we are eliminating, for example, one of the things that we've decided is elementary Chromebooks, some capital repairs and the amount of $75,000. The people that we have talked about, we are eliminating six teacher assistants for a total of $147,000. We are eliminating two coordinator positions for a total of $93,426. We are eliminating a .8 elementary music position. As Mr. Demodica said, we are hopefully going to creatively, we have a plan to continue to support elementary band in all of the elementary schools for the next school year and we're, we're confident that that will work out. But we saved almost, well, $39,359 there. We are eliminating one of the ITCs at the high school, which is a major league concern given the fact that we, you know, are a one-to-one district. Losing that position, we have really talented people in those positions too and it's frustrating and heartbreaking to make these cuts. As discussed, we're eliminating previously, we're eliminating an interventionist. We've discussed about, you know, the, the sixth grade Chromebooks and there is, you know, we're hoping for other savings. We know that there may be savings in pension and there's always with a, you know, a budget of this size, there's always some breakage. And we always hope that the breakage is gonna be in the black and not the red. And right now, we're hopeful that, like for example, in this year's budget, that we'll have some money in the black that we can perhaps utilize to do some of the things that we know we need to do. So, but, but as Mr. Demodica said, I mean, that is, that's a moving target. We don't know exactly what that will be, but we're hopeful that we can have a little bit of money to maybe take care of some of the facilities issues that we know that we have in the district. So I don't know if that summarizes the circumstances, but I think we've talked about this so much, but I believe we're looking at a total of 11. But I think we've talked about this so much, but I believe we're looking at a total of eleven positions, ten or eleven positions, Mrs. Vogel, in total? Yeah, yeah.
That was, that was just what I wanted, so thank you. I have a question, though, about the sixth grade Chromebooks. So are we, I, I know there's, Mr. Demodica had mentioned earlier that there, we may end the year with some money, unspent money. Are we, is that one of the things we're targeting to purchase through this year?
Well, I, we, we know that we need to get Chromebooks for our incoming sixth graders, and that would be a priority. So at the end of this fiscal year, and we're approaching that, the end of the fiscal year, if we have extra money, we would wanna target those, the, the Chromebook purchases with that money.
I mean, healthcare right now is projected to be about a million dollars over. And the cost is, I shouldn't say, the claims have come down a little bit. We may have some savings because of that in this year's budget. But it's really not savings, because we didn't spend the money in the first place to buy the things that we needed to do. But if, if it holds true, we're planning on making purchases so that the, there is no surplus. Because it really wasn't, we took about a million dollars from the kids to cover healthcare, we need to think about it.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't mean to suggest it.
No, it's all right, it's all right, but the, you know, we're gonna spend the money. And if it helps to buy it now, for next year's budget, we'll buy it now and move forward. We'll deal with next year as it's just, as another disaster, but, you know, it is what it is right now.
Mr. Fiorello?
I just wanna echo what Mr. Demodica, Demodica just said. It's not like we're just gonna end this year with a surplus. We, we hope we, we will have a surplus of some kind. But it's, we got there only because, once the handwriting was on the wall with the healthcare claims, we knew we could not spend any money. We stopped spending money back in like November, except for very important things that had to be done. So when people from the town look at it and say, oh, they were, you know, crying poverty, and now they have a couple hundred thousand dollars. No, we just stopped spending money. And for that reason, we ended up with a few dollars. It's not gonna be very much either, based on a sixty-six million dollar budget.
Thank you.
Let me just get one more comment to say, I just wanna thank the town council members, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Kane, and the others that have attended all our meetings. As I said to the mayor the other night, I did not expect, when I asked people to close town hall down and make them go somewhere else, that we would actually close not only in town hall, but the library too. And the parents and the teachers, everyone that came out, man, you guys did great, because they were out of their comfort zone. And the town councils that are in there now, including our past chairwoman, Mrs. Bolio, they made a case for us, and we got the mayor on board. He didn't give us half to give us the extra three hundred thousand, he didn't have to pay the master leases. But they understand the situation we're in. Before we take their vote, I just have to say thank you to them, and to the mayor as well. Everyone thinks he's the bad guy, but last year, we got over a million dollars from them and some money towards master leases. And we got Councilor Bradley to help pay for a new parking lot at McCourt as well. They're working with us, it's just the previous administrations is what did us with zero, zero, zero increases. So it just needs to be acknowledged, you know, that they stepped up.
Demodica, I'd actually like to add that it is, it feels like a partnership with the town council. And we, we have a common goal of fixing our long-term problem. It's still a daunting problem. We're gonna have a problem next year. This does not, this, you know, we have a problem this year, we'll have a bigger problem next year. I'd also like to thank Mr. Mitchell and his staff for countless hours looking at different solutions and trying to get us to a good place. Nobody wants to make any cuts, and especially you. I, I know, I know you don't wanna do it, but you, you, you got us really far, so I appreciate it. Any other comments? So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. That passes six-nothing. Thank you. The next item is discussion and/or vote to rescind teacher non-renewal recommendations. Mrs. Vogel, I, do you wanna speak? Thank you.
So that'll be tabled for this evening, because we'll have to have a special meeting next week.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to table. Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to table. Seconded by Mrs. Friedman and Mr. Hess. All those in favor? Aye. That passes six-nothing. Next up is discussion and/or vote to approve resolution SCR 2017-06, district's unassigned fund allocation. Mr. Demodica, this was in fiscal?
Mr. Chairman, this was in fiscal on Tuesday night. This is sort of a housekeeping issue for us. This gets us to comply with the government accountant standard boards in regards to our fund balance and how we assign it. And this was given to us by Mr. Pignano, and it just makes us compliant so we can use the money later on if we wanna, you know, move it around. And so this goes with our annual audit as well, so I would move passage in a three to zero vote.
Mr. Demodica moves passage of SCR 2017-06. Seconded by Mr. Fiorello. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. That passes six-nothing. I, I just wanna go back and say something about the budget. If we could get the budget online, Mr. Mitchell, as soon as possible. And I know we have a bunch of budgets on there, so it should just be designated as the past, the, the budget, if you can do that. Thank you. Next up, personnel recommendations. Mrs. Vogel.
So I have a number of them for you this evening. Some you've already recognized this evening, but for technical purposes, we have to read them into the record. So first, I'll start with retirements. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the following retirements. Diane Devolve, PE APE Health at North Cumberland Middle School, effective June 30th, 2017, after thirty-eight years of service. Eloise DeCesary, Building Secretary at North Cumberland Middle School, effective September 5th, 2017, after seventeen and a half years of service. Paul Lombardi, Secondary Math Teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, effective June 30th, 2017, after eleven years of service. Michelle McManus, PE APE, APE Health Teacher at McCourt Middle School, effective June 30th, 2017, after thirty-eight years of service. Jane Paquette, Grade Six Teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, effective June 30th, 2017, after twenty years of service. And Robert Vartanian, Custodian Days at Community School, effective July 5th, 2017, after twenty-six years of service.
Thank you, Mrs. Vogel. Pleasure of the committee?
Motion, we approve the personnel.
Mr. Demodica makes a motion to approve the retirements. Seconded by Mr. Fiorello. I, I just wanna say that a hundred and fifty years combined, which is incredible. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. That passes six-nothing.
Now I have some resignations, and again, some of these are cleanup ones. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the following resignations. Jessie Boutash, Assistant Principal of Teaching and Learning at Cumberland High School, effective June 30th, 2017. Aldofo Costa, Assistant Principal of Teaching and Learning at Cumberland High School, effective June 30th, 2017. Kathleen Heel, One-to-One Paraprofessional at Garvin Memorial School, effective April 30th of 2017. And Molly MacGyver, Secondary Science Teacher, that should be at North, I'm sorry, this should be at McCourt Middle School, effective June 30th of 2017.
Thank you. Pleasure of the committee? Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve the resignations. Seconded by Mrs. Friedman, Friedman. All those in favor? That passes six-nothing.
And lastly, I have a leave of absence. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the unpaid leave of absence of Rhonda Silva, Secondary Social Studies Teacher at McCourt Middle School, for the 2017, 2018 school year.
Thank you. Pleasure of the committee? Mr. Demodica makes a motion to approve the leave of absence. Seconded by Mrs. Goggins. All those in favor? Aye. That passes six-nothing. Thank you, Mrs. Vogel.
Thank you.
Next up, we have school committee comments, school liaison reports. Mr. Fiorello?
BF Norton held their field day for their students last week. And at the last minute, one of the vendors had to cancel on the kids, which would have left a pretty large gap of fund for the students. A call was put into the Cumberland Fire Department, which responded very quickly. They sent down one of their trucks and some of their staff, of course. And the kids had a great time climbing over the truck, working the hoses with the guys. So I just wanna say thank you very much to the Cumberland Fire Department for coming through for the kids.
Mr. Fiorello? Anyone else?
I just have a comment in regards to the work that the school committee and administration's done in the last four months. A lot of us has taken time out, whether you went to the state house, the town council meetings, to speak on behalf of the kids, and I think it shows we have a great team here working, you know, and it's all for the kids. And you've taken your own time at night to do these things like I have at town council, wherever it may be, and it's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Hess?
I'll pontificate a little bit, but with regard to the budget, okay, no, this, this will be short even by my standards. With regard to the budget, like, I mean, like all budgets, it's a compromise between what's affordable and what's needed. But the gap in Cumberland is, is far too wide, and it's ever widening. The only solace I can take, echoing the sentiments of everyone else, is that the seriousness of our financial situation seems to have greater understanding than ever before. And it filled me with pride and hope to see the number of parents, teachers, and residents who came out in support of the schools this budget season. But our communal efforts to improve funding cannot stop with this budget, and they cannot stop with the next school year. We did not get into this place in one or two years, and we will not get out of it in one or two years. The struggle is not over. I know the school administration and teachers will continue to fight for the resources they need to do their jobs, but we need parents and residents to continue this fight. This will not and cannot end with budget season. The cost of inaction and complacency are simply too high to bear. Last is not good enough.
That's well said. Anyone else? Just to reiterate something that Mr. Demodica said, yesterday, Mr. Mitchell, Mrs. Bolio, and Mr. Kane and I were at the state house. Was that yesterday or the day before? No, it was yesterday. I have to say, this has been one heck of a week. To testify on Representative Ackerman's bill, and Mrs. Goggins actually was there as well and dropped off written testimony. So I appreciate your efforts and the town council's efforts. It was, it was a good meeting. I think we, we gave facts and not opinions necessarily. You know, we, we, we have a case to be made that we can't afford the current situation. And that's what united, we said, we said that in an united way. So thank you, Mr. Mitchell and Mrs. Goggins.
Mr. Dan, just one thing, we shouldn't forget, you know, State Rep Jim McGoffin, Mia Ackerman, and Ryan Pierce, United States Senator, that have worked tirelessly filing bills that, you know, on our behalf. You know, so they're working with us as well. Thank you.
Alex Marszakowski. Thank you. Next up is adjournment. Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Seconded by everyone? Seconded by Mr. Hess and Mrs. Goggins. All those in favor? We are adjourned at nine eighteen. That passes six-nothing.